Richmond City calls to meeting orders on December 2nd, 2020. If they would please stand by my [inaudible].
I'd like allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation undergone individual with liberty and justice for all.
Like the moment every time our first time up in our open public forum, everybody that are not on the agenda wishing to address the council, this is your time. Seeing nobody jumping for joy, we'll move on to item three, approval of the agenda for this evening. I believe the agenda as is stands in front of you.
I'll make that motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Carry.
Approval of item number four, approval of meeting minutes from August 5th and August 20th, 2020.
There's no corrections, I make a motion to approve them as presented.
I shall second that.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Carry.
Item number five, approval of bills paid. Do anybody have any questions on the bills to be paid? Or paid?
Make a motion to approve.
Second that.
Any discussion? Have a motion and a second to pay the bills, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Carry.
To set the agenda for this evening, resolution 151-20, approval of August 2020 general electories. Item B, resolution 152-20, approval of donations and contributions for August, which was Richmond Lions for $633. Item C is resolution 153-20, authorization of lawful gambling exempt permit, application for by Ducks Unlimited, grit spring, chapter 119, on October 21st, 2020 at the Richmond Bus Service. And item D is acceptance of people services August 2020 report.
My only question that I have on that is resolution 153-20 is why are they holding it there when we have other establishments that could be used for that?
They're just doing the drawing there.
Oh, just a drawing there?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So then that way they would have the social distancing. It was supposed to originally be at the Blue Heron, but with everything going on, they're just looking for a large enough location that they can just do the drawing.
Just do the drawing, oh, okay, alright.
Like the most of the chapters in the state are either having some kind of a drawing like that or auctions, live auctions and stuff like that online, that's what they're doing this year.
Alright, then that was my only question pertaining to it.
Yep, that would be one.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Carry.
Item number seven, people services, Greg Stain.
Are they legal?
Yes, sure. You're still a second speaker, I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time. Um, giving you quick updates, issues at the facilities. Planted the seed last year about our whole computer system and everything. Well, about a week and a half ago, our one computer crashed on us and it's not coming back. Luckily, when they built this facility, there was redundancy. We have one main computer that operates everything in the office. With redundancy at the time that's in the lab, it's the same thing, but only part it don't have is the automatic dialer. The one that we use the most in the lab or in the office is one that crashed. So we do not have a backup, I mean, we do not have a dialer right now. When we get a call, it's off the backup dialer. That's not always the most reliable and it's very tough to program. It's literally from the eighties, but it has worked. But we ultimately, our goal is gonna be, you know, an idea, there's quotes, and if I need, it's very, very difficult to try and get people to quote something off of another one's quote because they all want to put their own spin on it, do their own thing, saw what they're good at, whatever it might be. What I did is I preferred controls is the ones I had the first quote from. And I basically screenshot what's in the box and sent it to Quality Flow and that's what they came up with for a price. It's quite a difference.
Yeah, no kidding.
And preferred controls in Albany, them guys are new prey, you know, just travel time is huge, it's a big difference. What this is gonna do, it's gonna get us back up and running and this upgrade is gonna be compatible with any of the other upgrades that are gonna have to come into future with our slick cards and all the other stuff, our MCC panels and all that stuff. This is all compatible with that. And with this, we're also gonna be updating our, right now we have an old Wynn's 911, it's gonna be the hardest view for dialer and all that kind of stuff too. So, and with that, and talking with Tessa this morning, well, you know, we had a meeting or whatever and talking with her and she was talking about the different funds out there. One of the things we do not have, the capability of, and it was not even in the original price, was to do any remote checking of the facility. So if we know a pump, one of our inflow pumps crashed on us, we got a Seopil, you can go right remotely, you can change it to the other pumps to run it. We didn't even get that in the original, but with this whole CARES Act and stuff, that's something they actually are pushing more, is doing things remotely. So Tessa might be able to speak her better, but this might be a good candidate for the CARES funds.
Yes, so when you sent me the original quote to the new quote, there was a $3,000 difference and when I compared it, it was all for the remote items that would need to be done to go forward with that. And we would be able to use all 3,000 with the, or pay the 3,000 with the CARES Act money. We do have enough so far left over, which we'll get in a bigger breakdown of what's sitting there right now after this. But we should be able to take 3,000 of that $15,000, $16,000 quote that's in front of you and have it paid through the CARES Act funds. So it would be so much coming from our own funds. But yes, because it's remote, it's stopping multiple people going in and out depending on the day, depending what time of the day, if it's weekends, you know, the staffing, if it's not always Justin or Greg, it's stopping any of the part timers also going in and out and helping with contamination and more crossing and being able to do someone from home to help with that.
So anytime you have a remote access availability like that, will each individual person have a secured code or something that they have?
Yes, very secure. That's what they prefer, it's very big.
And then these are actually operational with phones and laptops?
Yep, yep.
And their computer systems and everything too, so you can monitor all that, say if something went wrong or if you just wanna check over the weekend to make sure everything is working properly?
We still have to do onsite visits to do the PHDL, you know, a lot of that stuff.
I understand that, but the major stuff would be the thing.
Yep, we can keep an eye, oh God, there's a fighter and tell, hey, let's check, keep an eye on the water tower levels.
Yeah.
You know, we don't have to come in to do it, kind of stuff, you can keep, everything's remote.
Okay, nice.
You mentioned some of this that is being replaced or suggested to be replaced. That was in the eighties, had none of this stuff been replaced when the plant was designed?
Well, the backup dialer that we have right now, the one that was from the eighties, whatever, that one was put into play from the original plant. That was something that they took, that they had there and they put in for a backup dialer. It's just a backup dialer, it's not, if you remember when we had water tower overflow? Yeah, it got into play once, well, at that time when that crashed, the backup dialer was tied in, it didn't get.
None of this has been replaced with the new plant?
Was that?
None of this, these dialers or anything else were replaced when the plant was rebuilt in the early 2000s?
The Wynn's 911 and stuff was, that was all originally.
Backup dialer or whatever was not?
No, backup dialer was not, no. That was part of the old original facility. Whenever they put them out and dial them, not insured, it came from the plant or water plant or where it was originally. It's something the city had.
To give you an idea on how quickly they could do this?
Uh, we thought in two weeks he could have it.
Within two weeks?
Yeah.
Could have it installed?
That was one of my questions, because we're, keep an extra eye on it, making extra stops there at night.
Yeah, right?
Just because.
So we're looking at 12,000 out of pocket if we use the 3,000 out of CARES Act? Do we have the funds in some place to cover that?
I mean, it obviously is not budgeted for, but we'd be able to take all the reserves for it.
Just another question, with this upgrading software, we're not locking ourselves into a software that is only can be worked on by one company or one facility?
No, no.
Generic software?
This part is yes, and then once we get to the next step, when we have to do everything, then it's automatic systems is the original ones and preferred controls. We, it took a long time, but we did get the comment to document the program, they call it.
I just don't wanna get locked into something and all of a sudden.
Exactly.
Only one company that can be used and different things like this.
Correct.
How's the council wish that?
You have worked with preferred controls a few times?
Yes, yeah, they're the ones that actually get our south side load station also in the water plant.
Right.
What has to be done, make a motion to spend $15,950 and find the funds where we can or use the ones that are available.
As possible.
As possible, yes.
I'll second that. You have a motion and a second to move forward with preferred controls. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carry. Any other questions?
Yes, just to give you an update, in the next couple of weeks, hopefully, and it should be happening, we're gonna be all in sludge. We are gonna be getting things empty, you know, our phosphorus in our digestors getting high because it never leaves the facility with their biopick process, it goes up thirty bits, come back, you know. And we have highs, we know there's high phosphorus levels in the digestors themselves. We have about 225,000 gallons we're gonna get rid of. We're gonna be renting the equipment, which is a pump and the hoses and it's actually a stand, like a tripod thing, so we can top to from Northern Dewatering for a week. For a week is 1,200 bucks to run that stuff, which I think was bad. We're gonna be renting the wagon from Paul's Welding, 5,600 gallon wagon for 285 bucks a day, so if we get that a week, it's roughly two grand. And the tractor, we're gonna pull it with this from Arnold's, right down the road from Paul's Welding, and that's 50 bucks an hour on the unit. And we're guessing, if we load an hour, it's gonna be about 40 loaded after going, so it's about 40 hours, so not too bad. So just giving you an update there. We, we got our, the water tower, we finally got a disc and now we did a little bit of reviewing it, but there's a lot to go over. What we'll do is probably plan at the workshop, next workshop, next meeting, we'll kind of make recommendations, what we're gonna be recommending to you with the water towers.
Have pictures, maybe we can have it set up that you guys can actually look through the slideshow or we can shorten the version a little bit, because there are some neat videos that I think really explain some things or show some good things.
Yeah, that would be nice.
Maybe we'll look at tweaking some of those slides and put some of the real important ones in there.
And then I'll try to get like, one of the things they're highly recommending is getting some sort of mixing. We do have a research pump in that new tower over there, and basically what that does is keep it from not freezing right at the base where they usually freeze, but it does not keep the ice away from the rest of the tower, you know, ice damage and stuff, and they all, they recommend some sort of mixer and it's kind of twofold, you know, one thing, you get ice in there, number two is you won't get stratification layers in there, meaning you're gonna have a nice chlorine residual at zero to five feet, whatever. Then the next, it's a little less, and at the top, you don't have any, you know, so you keep good water quality through lower tower. So we'll have good prices, there's, these are different mixers, as everybody's trying to sell them, they have the best, but. Another system that's newer technology is a bubbler system, where you put an air compressor at the bottom. Every five minutes, it releases for about 10 seconds and that supposedly keeps it, just sends air right up through the center and that keeps them open also. So I wanna talk to people who've had them for a while and how they like them, that kind of, so. We're gonna do a little research before we come back about. We just, this had to be what, 4:30 today, we got results back on the survey that was sent out. It was, didn't get a whole lot of chance to look at it, but they only got 125 back and we're thinking that's about half, not quite.
Yeah, give or take.
Yep. Eighty no's, which is 64%, 25 yeses, which is 20%, and then 20 of them did not answer that question if they were in favor or not. So it's kind of answers our question, I guess, if there is much for interest. There's a lot of interesting comments, some rather colorful, you know, and some were supporting it and, hey, yes, do this and give us water too, you know, and some are just put $17,000 into my system, why would I do this, no way.
That comment's gonna be there no matter when you do it.
Oh, absolutely, yep.
There's somebody that has just, can we step backward, one comment on your, you'll be hauling sludge to the northeast corner of town, correct?
We are gonna be hauling, I forgot to mention that, thank you, it's gonna actually be Chuck Schmitz's part, we have four miles away.
Please use common sense, the route that goes, it doesn't have to go down Main Street?
Because we don't have to go down Main Street, you said?
I don't believe that we have to go down Main Street with this stuff and, because I don't feel that you wanna wash the Main Street down after you're done, but.
Correct.
I'm just saying.
No, you can go straight all the way across and then head east.
Chuck Schmitz is happy with taking the sludge?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, he's more than happy, I wish, you can't technically charge anyone for the sludge, you know, you can maybe, but he's, you know, if he wouldn't be so busy, he'd even help out hauling, but he's got a lot going on. You know, the timing's right, he's gonna be chopping next week, so we'll be able to use it and he's gonna get it incorporated right away. And then, do you have any other note I have here, it's just an FYI, it's gonna be, with our true up funds, it just ended in August, now it's gonna be over $1,000 coming back, you guys, next month, if it's not quite there next month, it's gonna be here by then, so.
Yep, and they're starting to televise next week, was that right?
Oh, for the project?
The first street that we had Nelson coming in, that's next week, I believe.
That they'll be televised, definitely televised in the out.
Yep.
So I don't know, that's all I have, any questions for me?
Just one quick question I have. Haven't been addressed in a long time, did Saint Martin ever do anything?
Oh, yeah.
They're done and all.
Okay, okay. I just didn't know if anything ever happened out there, so, okay, that was my only thought.
As long as they're televising, would it be beneficial to televise the new part that was just put in, or new repair that was just put in to make sure that from the pipe side or internal, that it is going to be sufficient for grabbing, maybe this? That will be problems, that it, you know.
So just where, the part that was just replaced?
Where we had the problem, I didn't want us, you know, all of a sudden something was just, maybe they didn't go quite far enough or something.
Settle after you were in there?
Right, settle during the compaction or some, because the repair wasn't that much, but still, let's have it that we, those people can sleep at night. So I don't know if you wanna run it, would it only take additional hour?
Yeah, I'd say it'd be more than half hour.
You know.
Really? Because they shouldn't have to clean it or anything, it's all clean, it's just a matter of running the camera.
That's what I mean, I mean, I just wanna make sure that it all is, is right.
Anything else, Greg? Just any other questions?
No, that's it, thanks, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, guys, have a good night.
You too.
At this time, we'll move on to item number eight, CARES Act money and small business track. At this time, I'm gonna, I'm gonna post statute, new statute 471-87 and 4-71-88. I am, have a potential conflict of interest, I'm duly denoting that to the council and I want it noted in the minutes. And at this time, I am gonna bring the meeting over to Mike to talk about small CARES Act.
You wanna, I guess, I don't mean to turn it over back to you real quick, Tessa, but you just wanna kind of walk through this a little bit? Just to make sure that everybody on the council is aware of what's happening currently right now and where the requests are coming into, so.
So if you remember at our last meeting, we put, or maybe two meetings ago, we approved to do a grant program for small businesses and we kind of earmarked about 50,000, give or take, just, we first wanted to see what we have come in for applicants. Well, that ended August 28th, we had 11 applicants that came through. All of them qualified based on the paperwork that I've received and reviewing them. With those 11 applicants, we had a total of $63,837.25. Of that amount, the county would be paying us 25% because we went the process of us administering the program. So we would, of the 63,000, they would be paying us $15,959.37. One thing the county did do to us that has been duly noted to them that we weren't real impressed with, there were about seven or eight cities that did the administrating on their own and didn't have the county do the program. And it was last Wednesday, so two days, Wednesday afternoon, so two days before the program was gonna be closing, they changed terms and extended the program. So if you go on the website right now, their application would say that it's been extended to September 18th and instead of the maximum amount being 7,500, it's 15,000. So obviously, I don't have authority to move forward with that, I wanted to see where we'd be sitting with our applicants with the 7,500. Reviewing our applicants, I would say we probably have four to five of them that probably could do more than 7,500. But then I wanted to talk to you guys as far as looking at other areas within the city that would potentially need some of the money also for the CARES Act. So I'm looking, I think, with some of my numbers, I don't have them all in yet, I think we could maybe give some of those businesses a little bit more, but I don't know that we can maximize to the full 15,000. I think we can maybe maximize it to more of a 10,000 because we will still get another 25% from the county of what we spent. They have earmarked, what was it, like 26,000 or 27,000 for the city, but that, that's if we use the whole 11,000 dollars that we got in CARES Act. Well, we're not doing that, so we'll never get that whole amount. So I have a spreadsheet here, I've updated the numbers, 75,820.51 cents would be up to date of what we've spent and paid as of today. Also, keep in mind, I did put to the side that 15,959.31 cents that we get from the county. So realistically, with these numbers sitting in front of us, we technically have 51,491.80 unspent. But I also have some Plan B spending. It's been brought to you guys a couple times, the washer and dryer for the fire department, it's a PPE, it can help with chemicals, it can help with the COVID, it can help with, you know, all of those types of airborne, to properly clean the gear in the event that it goes into elements that need to be taken care of. I do have quotes on them, we're looking at about 16,200 between the washer and dryer. So I have that listed. The arena, we have talked about as far as, and this just was talked about today, so kudos to Guild Plumbing for giving us some numbers because they literally were called at 4:30 this afternoon to push on the numbers. We're looking at about 13,846. And that would be touchless toilets, touchless sinks, and then doing the paper towel dispensers also. Another thing that Greg brought up was the $3,000 for going remote. Some, the other thing I had thought about would be for city hall, right now we have a key code entrance for the front door. And is, I do have cold spring, correct me here, Kevin, it's safe, who's the security guy?
Safeguard.
Safeguard, there you go, all the cold spring, he has come looked at what we have, he's gonna run me some numbers to go P-list or touchless with that also. So I don't even have an idea, I mean, I put 5,000, give or take, but it could be more, it could be less. With that, with all these numbers I've just given you, we have potentially about 12,000, give or take. So that's where left to spend, so that's where I was thinking, if we did the extra 25, 2,500 for these five businesses who can prove that they have 10,000 in expenses, which most of them have already given me that information, the county would give me, we'd be giving one free, we'd have 10,000 there and we'd still have about two grand, give or take, wiggle room that we could move forward with, when need be. My biggest thing that I found out, obviously, as we know, everything is delayed for all materials ordering of every sort. I had reality hit me about 5:30 tonight when I had Jamie Gilk tell me that if we wanna move forward with doing the bathrooms, great, but he said plan for about six to eight weeks for ordering. I have to have this money spent, literally paid, the work and all, by November 15th. That's about two months out, give or take. So I know this might be rushing things, I know we have a lot sitting here, a lot to process, but the biggest thing that I kinda need from you guys is, first of all, to look at approving the businesses with the grants would be one. The next thing from that, I would need fire, if we're gonna go ahead and allow them to do the washer and dryer. And then the next one would be Guild Plumbing, because I don't know, I never checked on the washer and dryer, if we're gonna have a delay on that also. But if we're gonna be ordering things of these sorts, I need to make sure that I can have it paid for, and I'm not gonna prepay just, you know, to make sure it's paper, I wanna make sure we're doing it properly and that the work is here or the items are here also before writing a check. I just, I get nervous now that we're looking at ordering things and we're getting down to the deadline of having to give money back when I know we can use it within somewhere. Questions, because I just unloaded a lot of information.
I totally believe you cannot prepay.
Right.
Basically, you're fraught that situation.
Exactly.
I believe that the fire chief is here, I don't know what the timetable is or where they're even estimating this commercial washer and dryer coming from. But I think we should expedite this as soon as possible across the board. Along with that, I believe the businesses definitely can use it as soon as possible. I do have a very large concern about the first applicant due to the conflict of interest on the page two of the applicant, application. Even though you take yourself off the board that evening, you still have political involvement. So I think we should expedite this as much as possible, as fast as possible to help these people out. I know there's some other ones that, you know, mentioned about the length of, length of time they've been in business. Such as Lake Life Sports or whatever, they were only in business three, four days?
January, yeah.
Within days of it shutting down. Then everything is above board. It definitely is gonna be a shot in the arm to these businesses and I think we should move as fast as we can, but not fall over ourselves.
So I, what I would be doing if they get approved tonight, I will actually be paying them, I'll cut checks tomorrow, right?
The businesses?
Yep, yep, to the businesses that get approved tonight, I will cut checks to give to them. And then I would like to hand deliver them if possible, if they're open, if they're there, I would like to, just as a, you know, a PR thing, a courtesy thing, you know, and be able to talk with some of them to see how things are going outside of that. I just hope to all of them on the phone anyways with questions and things too. So with that, what are your guys' thoughts on if they can prove 10,000 in expenses, are you okay with me giving them an extra 2,500 to give them the 10,000?
I have no problem with that, if they can prove it and they can do that, like I said, if there's extra out here and we do have the time and like I said, they kinda did it in the last minute to you and said, hey, this is availability, I know it's like you said, it's a rush, but I think we need, we need to do what we can possibly for these, for our businesses here at home.
Yeah.
If we can prove that, I.
I think, I think honestly, I probably only have to call one or two of these businesses to give them, to let them know to send me more. I think, I think honestly, I probably only have to call one or two of these businesses to give them, to let them notice and be more expenses. Otherwise, they've all gone above and beyond.
Okay.
Of listing, listing their stuff.
Excuse me, the the question I have is there, we're not gonna shortchange the city's portion.
I don't believe so, no, because.
This is a substantial shot in the arm, right? But if we're, you know.
Right.
I'm looking at the city as a whole, all fifteen thousand, fifteen hundred residents.
Could, could we do it this round? Could we do, um, I cut these checks tomorrow and let's see, um, workshop where we're sitting when we have some more um definite numbers. Cause I know there's probably still a couple bills with legal here and there that um are probably still floating. Um, and then we can reevaluate the extra twenty-five hundred that could be, you know, like around two dispersed at the end of the month kind of thing.
That would give you eight weeks to get to get to stay within that one, that spot then?
Yeah, because uh we'll be talking about that, but you'll be meeting at the, on the twenty-fourth because you guys have a public hearing for a tip instead of the seventeen. So that'd give me another couple, two, three weeks maybe. Hopefully by then I have numbers for the City Hall door. So then I will have a better idea where we're sitting on some of that also. But we could do this as a round one. Let let those who know that are close to that seventy-five hundred mark, that if they can show me expenses for ten grand, that there is the potential of giving it, getting an extra twenty-five hundred, give or take, to be at least taken to the council to be reviewed once we know where some more of our numbers are.
I believe what we, how we should, the verbiage should be used as there's a, no figures. There's a percentage that could be an increase.
Yep, yeah.
Rather than saying that there's a possibility of this much money or not. Maybe some of the other people can come up with some expenditures too. I don't know, I'm just keeping the door open.
Yeah, and I did call personally on some of them because there were a couple that what they requested on the application didn't match their expense sheet or on their expense sheet, they only had like their mortgage. So I called, I said, did you have any utilities or did you have this? And then they're like, oh, sweet. So we have revamped probably three to date up most of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so that, yeah. So with that being said, I know there there's some of them that they are maxed out on their own.
They're maxed out, you know that they're done to max, okay.
Yeah, I think that.
They're saying it's not to be larked into a number and just say there could be a second round. If you, if you have more expenses or will reevaluate that you did have more. Uh, there could be a second round if there's money available and that way we don't shortchange the city at all.
Yeah, I think that'd be a great idea.
We just wanna make sure that um every, every business within the city limits of Richmond did get contacted pertaining to this. So we all of a sudden don't wanna hear through the grapevine as you personally hand out checks to people. And all of a sudden, somebody says, well, wait a minute. Why did you get a check like this and I didn't receive anything or didn't even know anything about it? Seems to be a common issue sometimes that we have within the city of Richmond uh where communication lacks a little bit. And I just wanna make sure that we're covered that way because I I don't want somebody coming back and, you know, and just, you know, lighten the city up, let's say.
Okay, so how would you like me to proceed with that since technically we're approving these and we've closed the application process?
Well, I'm just, what I'm saying is.
Do we have to basically close the application process?
You don't have to.
No.
We can, let's consider this as round one.
That's what this would be considered.
Round one and and any other applications that come in.
Be a round two and we can evaluate.
Round two, but since the question I have, how are these people notified?
How were they? Um, Stearns County sent out a mailing um with everything. They, we spoke with them. They sent out a mailing to private, public. Um, they paid for a listing of all the businesses in Stearns County. So they personally have sent it out. Um, I I know not everybody's part of C and C, but that was part of it. Um, and then I did try to make contact with those that I didn't think would have gotten either or or just to try and push out a little bit to to make contact with.
All right.
Yeah.
You feel comfortable that the majority of the people have been notified with this particular?
I, I mean, I do, but I, we can still, we can still go around and make and double check. If I'm about doing the, these checks, you know, I can, while I'm in the area, stop in and just make sure.
All right, so with this particular portion of this, it seems like we're, we're coming up with, we're needing some type of an approval for this first phase, let's call it, or you wanna put a bold number to it? Or how do you wanna go about doing it? So this would be, this would actually be the first approval that we would be looking for?
Yes.
Would be for these particular businesses here for this amount of money?
Yes, so I would need an approval for, let's say, round one of applicants um for the, and if you wanna put that amount into sixty-three thousand, that's up to you guys. But that's what I would need is an uh a motion to approve round one.
All right.
I would definitely like a clarification on on the business number one.
As far as what would you like a clarification on?
On the conflict of interest.
So there's no clear answer on the conflict question. This is an email from Adam. The language in the federal act relates to federal conflicts. Um, I am left with trying to apply state to all of this. And with the statute that um Jim had referred to, the seven four one point eight seven and then the four seven one dot eight eight. Um, so with the four seven one dot eight seven, it provides a blanket prohibiting um city officials personally benefiting from a decision. A number of exceptions are provided in the statute four seven one dot eight eight along with a process that must be followed and exceptions that apply. And Richmond, it is my understanding that COVID relief funds are being administered in part by EDA, um, which most of these that we're in, so let me clarify that. Most of these that we're in, we had about half of them were taken to EDA last week to be reviewed also. Anyone, and which is what we had talked about in the process. Any of them that came after the fact, you guys are reviewing. Um, so with that, um, and the funds are part of the federal program. Based on the intent of the program to have expansion of um availability, the fact that they are federal funds and that the EDA is involved in the administration is in my opinion that the exception to four seven one dot eight seven applies. In order for an interested official to receive funds under the program, the following process must be followed. Individual with a potential conflict of interest must publicly disclose the conflict, which Jim did. The conflict must be noted in the minutes, which I will. Um, the individual with the potential conflict of interest must abstain from the matter, including any vote, which Jim has. And both the EDA and council must unanimously vote, um, less abstaining of Jim. So this, his application wasn't for EDA to review it. It was voted in favor of moving forward with. So EDA standpoint is fine. Now the council needs to decide on how you'd like to proceed.
If you follow, I'll got that. So it, it basically sounds like um that Adam have an, Adam hardly had an opportunity to be able to take a look at this. Um, he knows the legalities of what's in it. So obviously, uh Jim, um, you know, as a business owner, as a resident, um, you know, he will not be doing anything pertaining to this. Um, so he won't be voting on it um or anything. So I I truthfully, as long as it's all on the up and up, I don't see any issues with it or no problems at all that we can go ahead and make a, make a motion to to move forward with this.
The only problem I have is there's another member here that can, could apply too, except that with black and white, you can't apply.
Give us an example.
Me.
Why?
It says right here, EDA or city council member that have personal financial interests. I have a lot of business over here too.
Right.
Says I cannot apply.
Where do you see that?
Might be the policy, but.
Benefit financial from the business to assist. That's on the second page of the application.
Okay.
And that was even brought to Adam's attention because he reviewed the policy and I brought that to him.
That are underneath that relate to state statutes. And the state statute one relates to school board that I read this afternoon. So that deters people from applying. But you're allowing it or thinking of allowing it. I'm not saying you're allowing it yet.
Um, did you talk, did you talk to, did you talk to Stearns County about this? And the reason why, the reason why you would not?
After you read it and say you can't apply, what do you do?
I hypothetically, I think I would have double checked with Stearns County with that to see on on what that could have been and if the conflict of interest does become an issue. I don't know why you didn't take the opportunity to be able to do it as a business owner.
Well, I guess I, when I see a stop sign, I stop. I don't call the the State Highway Department to find out if I should continue on.
Apples and oranges, so.
The policy clearly reads that an officer of the EDA or city council will not have, will not have a personal financial interest or personal benefit financially from the business to be assisted. But it also then lists the Minnesota statute that I just referenced in Adam's email of how we could move forward with the statutes. Adam reviewed this. I sent him this part of the conflict of interest and that was his reply. I, both things and all things have been reviewed and commented on by Adam.
Oh, yeah. So our attorney has has reviewed this, like you said.
Yep.
And it's okay.
But it doesn't, I mean, Pat, I understand your interpretation of it, that, I mean, that would be a red flag to say, yep, I shouldn't apply. But it doesn't word for word say do not apply or I can't apply either.
Well, I believe maybe we should contact the county attorney and find out what they said.
Again.
Approve them all except one and they're on top of the list for the next round for that amount or more. Then we know from all aspects.
If that's the motion that you're making.
And I will make that a motion to approve all businesses except the JNS lanes due to the questions of conflict of interest and the county attorney be notified and give the county's opinion since they're basically administering this.
All right, so you're gonna approve round one minus JNS.
Correct.
JNS, okay?
Okay.
Um, and then contact county attorney.
Okay, so obviously, we have a a motion on the table by Pat. Um, I need a second pertaining to this. I need a second to approve this. Okay, seeing that we do not have a second, um, we will then need to take a roll call, is that correct?
No, motion fails.
Motion fails.
All right, can I just make a note here? Cause I know what's gonna, I can just about imagine how we're gonna move forward on this next motion. The next, whoever makes this next motion in the way that I think it's gonna go, it's gonna have to be a unanimous vote. Here's my thing. Are we really gonna hold up this process for ten other businesses who can use these funds? I'm not trying to tell you guys how to vote and how to approve things. But I think we need to look at the big picture here as far as what to do with these other ten. Whether we relook at it, whether we wanna do something different to what Pat's was, whether you wanna do something similar to tweak it. But I don't think ten businesses within our city should be suffering over one. I'll let that set in a little bit.
Mr. Mayor or Mr. Acting Mayor, I don't believe I can make the same motion.
I don't believe you can, no.
No, according to Roberts Rules Board.
No, but that's why I'm saying if someone wants to make a similar one. Yep.
Well, then I guess we need to put something back on the table here um for um some type of a motion to continue with phase one here um with the um, the exception of of JNS Richmond Lanes. Uh, we need to look at approving the remaining businesses um for the amount of uh the money that would be up there and available. So, so I'm looking for a motion for somebody to do that. Okay, I'll make a motion to to approve. We got ten businesses here for a total fifty-six thousand, three hundred thirty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. And the second round, uh after being, after being contacted, that they would be the first ones that would definitely be on there, they would get the full amount.
That's what, correct, just a clarification.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table by Kim, looking for a second.
I shall second that motion.
Okay, I have a second by Kim.
So we need a roll call.
What's that?
I need a roll call.
All right, front page here, roll call, um, is Pat?
Aye, yes.
Mike M, yes. Tim, yes. Kimberly?
Yes.
Jim?
I'm Steve.
Okay, so that particular portion of this does pass.
Okay, one thing I do wanna note, I will contact obviously the county um attorney on this. I don't know what type of availability I'll be getting from it. But do keep in mind, we did spend a lot of money with our own city attorney on all of this also. So, but I will contact them and and see where it goes. Um, so.
Back up here just real quick, I have a question pertaining to that. Um, if you get the answers that are needed, um, do, can, can, does that have to wait now for?
Yep, according to the motion, it will have to leave a round two.
Okay.
Cause that'd be go the month. Richmond will be at the workshop, correct?
Correct. Yep, I will.
Two weeks.
Uh, no, it'll actually be three because you guys are meeting on the twenty-fourth instead of the seventeenth.
Okay, but whatever, it's not gonna be a month out.
Yep. Yep, so I will, um, I will get that information and then if we, and from my understanding is and for round two, we're gonna have it open. And I can accept applications.
Yes, for the balance of money.
Okay, all right. Then I will bring that to the next, the next workshop. So now that we have that first part done, um, next part, I need a motion for what we'd like to do for the fire department and the washer and dryer.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
And that way they can expedite it as of tomorrow. So that if there is a lapse of ordering time, maybe they can pick it up from a different company with the same amount of money.
I do have one question pertaining to that before the approval is set. Um, there is uh two different capacities. There's a thirty pound and a forty pound.
There's a red.
On that, um, which one is included within this sixteen thousand, two hundred?
The red X by the thirty.
Okay, that's the one. So it would be the thirty, not the forty.
Correct.
For for that sixteen too, is that correct, Jesse?
And that's what they requested.
All right, okay, I ju- I just wanna double check because I saw that on there. And you know, I mean, there's not that much difference between the two, but, but that did include that. Okay, that was my only question pertaining to that.
Yeah.
Jesse, my question to you is, I know you you approved that the, we, we're looking at doing the thirty. Um, is that available or are both of them available at this time? When you made this contact with them, did they say they were, either one was available?
They were both available at that.
They were both available, okay. That's all I wanna say, because if it isn't and we can't get that thirty in time.
Yeah.
You know, we could probably go straight ahead and go to the fourth.
And we'll, we'll make contact and press that bridge if we need to.
Okay.
Yep.
Michael, you're still in charge here.
Only I am.
Yep, so Pat did a motion, Kim seconded.
Okay, we have a motion by Pat then for the fire department to approve the washer and dryer at the sixteen thousand, two hundred dollars. I need a second. Kimberly, you?
Kimberly, Kimberly seconded.
Yep, Kim seconded.
We just need a.
Okay, well, so we have a second by Kimberly, all in favor?
Aye.
I believe there should be a roll call vote because again.
Again, we got one, I was right.
Yeah.
All right, let's do a roll call vote. Here we go, Pat again.
Roll the call, yes.
Mike M, yes. Kim, yes. Kimberly?
Yes.
Jim?
I'm Steve.
Okay, got that on record?
Yep.
All right, um, we're gonna do these individually?
Yep.
All right.
There should only be the one more and that would be.
The arena.
The arena, yeah.
Great, okay, all right. So the next one on the thing here is the arena, the touchless bathroom.
Yes.
Uh, and and for the, for the toilets and the fans and the paper towel dispensers and all the things that are looking at getting upgraded by Guild.
Kevin, I don't, Kevin, we're not doing, this doesn't include paper towels. This just does the sinks and the toilets, correct?
We already have two touchless paper towel dispensers.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
You said towel dispenser.
I did, that's a correction, thank you for catching that, Mike.
It's touchless toilets and sinks.
How about entrance lights?
Entrance lights?
Movement touchless.
There, if the building's occupied and open, the lights are on.
No, I mean, we're talking touchless there, coming in the door. Everybody that hits the light switch should probably be touchless too.
There would only be staff that would be turning lights on and off.
I'm just saying, if we're doing everything and the money is available.
They need to have sensors there because, you know, inactivity. They need to have sensors there because, you know, inactivity, the room would be dark if somebody, you know, and we'd have to have multiple sensors, cause we have multiple entrances and. I, I'm not, I'm not sure you need to dump that, but that did cross our minds, uh, we thought of, you know, touchless issues in the bathrooms.
Alright, well, for now, this is the one that we have on the table that we need to look at voting on, uh, it was the proposal done by Gilk Plumbing and Heating, uh, for the thirteen thousand, well, eight hundred and forty-six dollars.
Correct.
Okay, so I'll need a motion for that particular one?
So.
Motion by Pat second. Like Tim? Okay, all in favor?
Roll call.
I need a roll call.
Is he not part of this whole discussion?
He's not the whole discussion, I thought it was only portions of it.
The whole thing, he's abstaining from.
The whole thing.
Tell him it's a, I don't mind.
Aye.
Mike M., yes. Tim?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Jim?
I'm Steve.
Alright, is that it?
Yep, that's all I have for right now, so like I said, I will, um, work on cutting checks tomorrow for the businesses and get them delivered, um, and then make contact with any that maybe didn't know, and let them know that there's a round two to move forward with it.
And with that round two, is there a deadline?
Well, the counties is September eighteenth, I think that's a good one to stick with if we're gonna meet on.
Well, we can, let's just stick with it, yes, absolutely.
Because they're, because we're gonna be meeting on the eighteenth, so that would still, or on the twenty-fourth, we're meeting on the twenty-fourth, so that gives me time to get those applications in and processed and everything, so, yes. I'll explain that to you more later on, Mike, why there is that meeting change.
Okay. Alright, um, I'm turning the meeting back over to Jim, is that alright?
Yep.
Now it's time to move on to number nine, Department Report, Police Department, Chief Jason Bloom.
Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening. Um, start out just a monthly report for July, in Richmond, we had a hundred and fourteen total incidents, um, four medical emergencies, seven suspicious activities, thirty-three traffic stops, just six citations, and seventy miscellaneous calls for service. Looking at save stations again, heard a lot of it at the end of last year, kinda last summer, um, with COVID, everything got pushed back, um, we do have funding for, um, the Centennial Park Save Station, um, the lift station on the north, uh, west part of town on Cedar Avenue, and then there's also one funded for that will be going on private property on Cherrywood Assisted Living, um, kinda looking at, just to say thank you to, for the one in Centennial Park, donations were given by, uh, Richmond River Lake Days Run and the Richmond CNC, um, the one that'll be going on the lift station was donated by the Coltspring Richmond Police Foundation, Sterns Electric, Coltspring Legion, River of Life Assembly, West Central Carriage, and then Oktoberfest through Third Street Brew House, and then the Cherrywood one was, uh, donated by the Coltspring Richmond Police Foundation, and the, um, through Eric Koneg, the Nicholas P. Koneg Hero Foundation, so just wanted to say thank you to all those, and then also to Tom Faber and Faber Electric, um, for doing all the installation electrical and all of that's being donated by his company, so just, a lot of people came together to make this all happen, so, um, with the ones going on city property, just need approval from you guys to put those there.
This time I thought we had made a group on city property, when this one.
We were gonna do locate by each location, so.
From what I remember, as we raised the funds for each location, I was, I wanted to, you guys wanted me to come back and get approval for each location as they went on.
So Centennial Park and the lift station on Cedar.
Understood, I'll make a motion to accept that, to, to put the, put those down, those two locations.
I'll second. Aye.
Excellent, thank you, so, um, the stands are being made for them, um, and they should be up when Faber Electric has time to do it, I know a lot of the construction companies are relatively busy right now, so, um, one other thing is, there's been a lot of fraudulent bills going through the area, we had, um, a business that accepted a couple hundred dollars worth over the weekend, um, we located another vehicle that had a printer, paper, and everything to actually print the bills, um, and it seems to be going just up and down Highway twenty-three, ninety-four, just hitting the gas stations, the businesses, the local areas that they think they can pass it by, um, a lot of that with the, uh, face curtains that everybody needs to wear, they feel a little bit more brazen, a little bit safer to go into these businesses and do it, because it's harder to identify people later on, so, um, if anything looks off, businesses, if you have the pens, mark them, and just make sure, if there's any training that anybody wants done for their, um, employees, um, our investigator is really good at putting on a presentation for local businesses, so if anybody has questions, contact their office and we'll do what we can to, uh, help everybody out, but we don't wanna be, see anybody taken advantage of.
Going back to the, the save stations, have they been used in any city yet? Have they been installed?
So, in Richmond, we have the one at Richmond Elementary, City Hall, Casey's General Store, A and W Restaurant, um, none of them have, a couple of them have been open, none of them have been used.
So they've been tripped but not used?
Yes.
No, but not called?
No.
Have they been tripped?
Um, yeah, a couple of them have been opened, um, they, I think we had one that was actually, they thought it was an emergency, ended up not being an emergency, a couple of them are just being, um, just opened, I think people just curious, but I, I, if it saves one person five years down the road, I think all the effort we put in is.
Well, I'm just saying, have they been used at all?
Yeah, no, and I, I get the, yep, but no, none of them have been used up to this point. Any other questions? I'll add.
Thank you guys.
Thanks.
Move on to fire report.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Uh, first off, I would like to thank you guys for considering the washer and dryer, so it means a lot to us, so, um, starting out, um, calls for August, um, as of eight twenty-six, uh, we actually ended up having two more medicals, uh, so total of nine medicals, one fire call, and one hazardous weather watch, uh, for total of eleven calls. Uh, for training, uh, we did that forty-four first responder refresher, um, plan, we covered numerous medical issues and situations, um, such as concussion, head trauma, uh, diabetic reactions, um, everything about that, so, um, Minnesota Board of Fire Training and Education, the MBFTE, awarded us under the round thirteen Training Reimbursement Program, and amount of four thousand six hundred dollars, um, this training reimbursement award is for the, uh, MBFTE-approved training that was conducted, so, um, thanks to our training officer for keeping close records on that and submitting those receipts. Um, chart detail, there was no major issues to report on that, um, the equipment, like I said last month, um, we've got some poor quality, I shouldn't say poor quality, but, um, the hydraulic hoses for our extrication tool are in need of repair, so we're visiting, um, different prices and options in companies to get the best price for that, so. Uh, theme grant again, no news is good news, um, haven't heard nothing as of yet. Um, the other topics, um, we did interviews on Saturday, August eighth, at eight o'clock, after the review of the interviews, backgrounds, and availability of the applicants, we decided to move forward with one out of the two applicants, um, so with your guys' approval, of course, um, I would like to ask permission to hire applicant John Schmitz as a member of the Richmond Fire and Rescue Department.
One question, this is residence?
Uh, he is just north of town.
Half mile on the edge of town.
Um, he's right, uh, I'm sorry, he's right off of Scotch Pine Court, um, in the West Ashton Development, um, about a mile north of town, right across from once in town hall. So he's well within, we, um, timed it up, it's like five minutes out.
And he has some training?
Yes, I'm sorry, he is already fire one and fire two certified, and he is available for daytime calls, which is a plus. So, um, criteria, um, the other applicant, um, did not meet the criteria of the timeframe, background, all that other stuff, so.
This time I make a motion to hire John Schmitz as a new member of the Richmond Fire Rescue.
Excuse me, I will second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, you do have to do a physical.
Yes, yep, yep, and we are waiting, I should, we're gonna run up and get on the horn with the, um, company for the wash and dry along with the, um, making sure we got everything. He said it should be here by Friday, um, but more or less look for Wednesday, so, I'm begging on Wednesday, but of course, if the physical comes back.
Yeah, so contingent.
Handing the physical.
Handing the physical and all that stuff.
So.
What number does it put us at then, Jesse?
That would put us at twenty-four.
Put us at twenty-four with this hire?
Yeah, and at this time, I guess I didn't really, um, look too much into it, um, there is no for sure thing if we're gonna have another person retire or resign by next year, um, my gut feeling will, so, I would just as soon keep it at twenty-four, up until we, we hear back, being that, cause your individual is only trained.
Already trained, he's training already.
Right, so, if we wanna hold off for next year, up until we get two more people available, so, um, I can revisit that, I'll keep you guys updated on that as well.
The only thing that, that there would be a question there is the, any type of payout on your retirement, because I believe that said at twenty-five now.
Correct, uh.
So then the dividends would be different?
Right, correct, yep. So, um, other than that, our next meeting is the ninth, next week, at, uh, seven o'clock, if any of you would like to join, like always, it's more than welcome to join, so, um, other than that, that's all I have, if anyone has any questions, concerns, answer them right now.
Thanks, Jessica.
You bet.
Thank you.
Move on to I M C, Emergencies Management, in your pack, and you have a page and half from Spirit King listing all the things that have been put in. With that, we'll move on to I M D, Arenas and Parks, Kevin Moody?
It got a little out of order, but the last two pages is the preparedness plan, um, that Kevin had put together for the arena.
Uh, good evening, Council, Mayor, everybody at home, um, we're going to be moving forward with the ice season, believe it or not, uh, most communities, uh, will be putting, that have an arena, will be putting ice in between this time and October first, uh, we plan on starting up our system on September fifteenth, painting ice on Friday, September eighteenth, and having first ice usage on Saturday, September twenty-sixth, um, we knew we needed to have a plan opening up the building, and trying to figure out how to do that, we have had conversations with both our, uh, Youth Hockey Association and our Figure Skating Club, and we came together, we looked at, um, uh, other rinks, other facilities, and what they were doing, uh, all of these rinks have been operating at some capacity during the summer, we used the Blaine Super Rink, uh, we used the MAC in St. Cloud, and, uh, Wilmer's, uh, Blue Line Club, uh, that's their smaller rink that they use in the summertime, and came up with, uh, what, what we hope was the best of all three of those, those facilities, and as you're looking through it, obviously, the first portion of it is about masking, um, you know, you come into this building, you need to have a mask on, um, it talks about, when it comes to, uh, physical or athletic, uh, activity, that's when a person can take the mask off, so basically, uh, our skaters are gonna come in, and they're gonna have a mask on their face, and when their helmet goes on their head, um, the mask will come off during their activity, when their helmet comes off of their head, after their activity, the, the mask will go back on, um, there are some other exceptions in there, but those are, those are basically all the, uh, the Minnesota state statutes that apply to us, if you wanna look those over, some of the things that we're trying to encourage, if you're sick, don't come, if your kid is sick, don't come, if you have somebody sick at home, don't come to the rink, um, stay home, uh, we're also, uh, requesting that, uh, all skaters come dressed to the arena, so, uh, with the exception of skates, uh, helmets, and their sticks, um, and, uh, the, the exception to that would be the goaltenders, if it's a hockey practice, and they'll be given a space to dress, um, cause they just have more equipment, that would be kinda silly for them to dress outside, and then, uh, we're encouraging not to use the facilities here as far as going to the bathroom, so we're, we're asking that people use their bathroom, use the bathroom at home before they come. While at the arena, we're gonna, we don't want them in the building until fifteen minutes before their scheduled ice time, that'll give them plenty of time to get their skates on, get to where they need to be, and then they can hit the ice, uh, we're also asking, or it will be mandated at the start, one parent, okay, uh, one family member with, uh, the skater when they come, no, no more, we don't want whole families in the building, only one person, that's been a pretty standard practice across the state over the summer, and then, um, uh, social distancing too, so when those, when those adults are here in the building with their skater, we're, we'll be monitoring to make sure that they're not congregating down in a corner, or what have you, um, and then, of course, we're encouraging if your son or daughter is old enough, just drop them off at the door, they can tie their own skates, they can get themselves on the ice, um, don't come into the building if you don't have to. Uh, we will not be using locker rooms initially, um, this is, we're a little bit behind the curve on this one, and I wanna say that because, you know, these places that we took the policies from have been at this for a period of time, so they've actually gone to locker rooms, so we're kinda playing catch-up, and that's fine, I think we're okay with that, we will not be using locker rooms, the plan is to use the front row of the bleachers, we also have some wood benches that we plan on putting down the east wall here, that is a matted area, uh, all they need to do is put their skates on, put their helmet on, and hit the ice, if they're a figure skater, a lot of times they come in with skates and skate guards on anyways, um, they will also not, they will be asked not to bring their bags into the building, okay, so if they have hockey bags, really, all we should see are kids coming in with skates, sticks, and helmets in their hands, you know, bags, people trip over them, uh, you know, there's a possibility of contamination of the bag, so, uh, they will be asked to not do that. Another thing is coaches, keeping coaches separated, both on and off the ice, um, as far as the on-ice operation goes, USA Hockey is in what they claim to be phase three of their deal, I mean, it's, it's kinda tough, because USA Hockey's nationwide, um, but we're, this is from, uh, the state of Minnesota, and we, they're required in youth activities to have, uh, uh, two pods, a pod is just a group of kids, that's all it is, of, uh, twenty-five skaters or less, so, twenty-five skaters for our organization's kinda big, so fifty kids on the ice is pretty unusual for us, um, except for Monday nights, and that's a whole different thing, um, so, they need to be limited, and the youth association knows that they need to be limited to groups of no larger than twenty-five, and two of those groups at a time, uh, they've also been informed that, uh, they need to, to manage their ice, so they don't have these groups crossing or passing, or actually even competing with each other initially, okay, and by initially, I mean in the first weeks of the program, they're just learning skills and, and fundamentals anyways, so coaches will be asked to do that, the drinking fountains will be taped off, and, uh, skaters, and are asked to bring their own water into the building. Again, skaters, uh, and coaches must leave the arena fifteen minutes after their ice session, so we don't have people hanging out and congregating, uh, once you're off the ice, please leave the building, uh, one of the big things that we have around here is warmups, uh, you can bed in the building while there's ice going on, there's always kids running around, or a group doing push-ups, or a group shooting pucks in the corner, or what have you, we're not gonna encourage any of those activities right away, cause that's congregating inside an area. The MAC actually opened up parking lot area over by the water tower, next to the golf course, so, the area over on the east side could be used for coaches if they want to do some type of outdoor activity with their kids, and again, social distance while they're doing that. So, practices, one, uh, one parent per skater allowed, locker rooms, lobby, and bleachers will not be used, so, um, we're gonna rope off everything from the first row of bleachers up, we'll just keep them, keep them shut down here for the first ti, uh, and, uh, the skaters will, will, will dress in designated areas, the restroom in the locker room area will be what will be available to the public, it's a smaller facility, we can clean that more efficiently, and that's what, uh, people should use. Games and performances, now this is, uh, it's a little hairier there, you're a little, um, and this won't happen until we hit November, they won't play any games until November, so basically, the whole month of, of October is all practicing, forming teams and all that stuff, two parents allowed at the arena at a time. Two parents allowed at the arena at a time. Uh, parents and family members will be allowed access to the bleachers and lobby during those activities. Only skaters will be given a locker room during those activities. The locker rooms are always monitored by adults anyways. Um, spectators must wear masks the entire time they're in the building, so if they're standing up in the stands, they need to wear a mask, okay? Um, pretty much standing there. Um, here's something a little bit different. Parents and family members will be asked to immediately leave the building after competition. A lot of times what they do is they all congregate in an area and they wait for their kids to come out. You've seen that, right, Mike? And, uh, so they need to go outside. And they can do all that, hey, good job, Suzie, good job, Bobby, out in the parking lot, and, and get that done. At that time, the locker rooms, bleachers, and lobby, the areas that we use, uh, will be sanitized and shut down again, um, as, as we go back to normal, okay? Uh, the contracted organized sports, uh, group will be responsible to make sure none of their skaters have a fever or show signs of illnesses. Uh, skaters that are showing signs, uh, will be prohibited from the facility. And our staff, uh, will retain the right to, uh, remove or ask people to leave, uh, the building, you know? If they're, if they're not paying attention, if they're not spreading out, if they're not wearing their mask, our guys are willing to do that. Um, and then just a little bit at the end. We have sent, uh, COVID-nineteen waiver forms to both the Youth Hockey Association. We have asked to be a part of the Youth Hockey and the Figure Skating Club's waiver forms. So they're, they will hold us harmless and indemnify us if there is an issue within their program. Um, and Tessa has that, um, Adam's gone over it to make sure that we're protected as the city of Richmond and River Lake Civic Arena. If somebody should get sick, you know, hopefully, we can, we can protect ourselves with that. Um, we also have, um, we have signed contracts by both organizations right now for moving into the season. And quite honestly, that was one of the things that was a little spooky to us. Are they gonna get moving? I mean, are they gonna be willing to do it? And, and, you know, they both are. We have put an ex- uh, uh, an addendum, or an extension, or a clause into the contract that does state that if COVID-nineteen should force us to close down by the state of Minnesota, we will renegotiate the contract at that time.
Correction, federal, state.
Federal, state, or local emergency, yes. Um, we have to protect those organizations too, because let's remember, they're the ones who, you know, put the butter on our bread. And, uh, so we need to make sure that we're, that we're being responsible by, towards our members as well. Um, this is for the youth organizations that use our building. High school hockey, we don't know what's going on. Um, we're waiting for the Minnesota State High School League to come to a conclusion on what they're going to do with winter sports. Uh, we don't know what that is. There has been a situation where, if there is no high school hockey, the youth hockey program will pick up hockey at those ages. So we may need to renegotiate our contract anyways, because there'll be any teams that we normally would not host here. You know, if they're gonna add a nineteen-year team and a sixteen-year team, and then we're gonna take that on as ice pressure, then we need to make sure that, uh, that, that it reflects the additional work that we'll be putting in for, for the building and everything else. The high school one's a little hairy. There's a lot of rumors out there that, uh, high school hockey will, will continue. It might be two parents in the stands, it might be, you know, no, no student body in, in the stands, you know? Probably not the pep band, um, but who knows? And, uh, we'll move on from there. Does anybody have any questions on this?
Just real quick, Kevin, uh, hearing games in November and stuff too, um, will you have concession stands open at that time or not?
Plans not to. My plan is not to encourage, um, the gathering, you know? The line of people out the door, you know? But, I mean, we only got two people in the stands at the time, so, for, for skater.
But I'm just saying, stating that if you have marked off six-foot areas where they would need to stand prior to them, one at a time, come up.
All the way around here and out the door.
Okay, all right.
No, we'll work on it. You know, again, we, we have a month once ice is in to kinda play with it.
Sure, okay.
Uh, one of the things that, that, that isn't addressed here, and, uh, I'll most likely come at you with something else, is going to be, uh, protocol for our open ice times, our open skating, and our open hockey, and how we're going to, uh, deal with that. Uh, those people pay money to come into the building to use the ice, and, um, we need, I need to figure out how to facilitate taking the money and having the concession stand open for that, and then providing safety out on the ice and in the arena. So, we're taking it seriously.
We have to.
Pat?
Yeah, I had the same one concern was the open public skating.
Yeah.
The other thing, will there be masks for sale here?
Well, I don't, I, I can, we could definitely do that, yeah, I mean, that's not.
Because all of a sudden, some person forgets it, and we're gonna go and get one.
Sure.
You know, or it gets damaged on the way in, or anything like that.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely do that, I can look into making purchases.
You brought up a, uh, bag changing area for skates and whatever, is that gonna be wiped down after we shift?
Okay, what we have done is, and I think Tessa brought it up when we did the care section, we purchased a fog machine, okay? So we can sanitize a large area of the building really quickly. And, uh, so, yes, it'll be wiped down, it will be fogged. We're gonna do our darnedest to, uh, make sure that we're, don't get our friends and community members sick, so.
Uh, concession sales type thing, would you consider putting in machines, whether it be candy, uh, chips or whatever? That's just one item that, that can be there.
I can look into that possibility.
What happens if there is a, what's your plan B in case you do have to shut down due to the federal, state, or local? Are we, are we gonna shut off compressors, what are we gonna do?
I think we need to feel it out, um, you know, it's expensive to put that ice in. Um, if it looks like it's going to be something that's, I mean, and we can gauge it. If it looks like it's gonna, gonna be something that's a long drawn-out thing, then maybe that is the course, is to pull the ice. But when we paint on the eighteenth, I mean, we're making a twenty-five-hundred-dollar investment in doing that paint. So it might be, oh, you know, it's gonna be six weeks to a month out before we know anything. Maybe it's just shutting down the lights, leaving the refrigeration on, and then, you know, playing it out like that.
That was one of my concerns when I asked to have a report to find out what your plan B would be.
Right.
Uh, and just remember that also when you're negotiating a contract with your customers, that, yes, you wanna make sure they come back, and you wanna make sure that it's fairly, but we have a hiccup investment also.
Absolutely, and.
Of putting the ice on and, and different things.
A- absolutely.
I'll learn to come through that. Uh, so at this time, would you say there is gonna be public skating or not?
I would say there is gonna be public skating, I just need to figure out the process to get people in the door, out to the ice, and then out the door, yeah.
Will we be scanning people for temperatures or not?
Uh, that was not our plan, I mean, I don't have.
So you're just taking.
I don't have staff to.
Social guidelines that these people are coming in not sit, I guess.
Well, I, you know, a- any, any business, I mean, you know, I, I walked into Jack's to get a pop before the meeting, and, you know, they, they took it as I was responsible, you know, to, I, I, I mean, I don't have the staff nor the, or the, uh, you know, the financial ability to have somebody there at the door.
One thing we talked about with, like, the association.
Providing them with that.
Well, not providing, but suggesting that they would need to provide their own thermometers for the kids coming in. Is somebody from the association, a parent or whatever, if you can, maybe have two, three of them available. It was an idea to pass along to them, but as far, like Kevin has said, the staffing and for us to take on that responsibility, um, would be quite a bit. So we thought maybe pass it along to them.
For like an open skating night, I've got a, I've got a maintenance Zamboni driver, and then I have a, a concession stand working on. I'd have to bring somebody else in to scan as they come in, you know? Um, at the end of the day, they're responsible to have their mask on when they walk into the building and, and, uh, you know, so. I, it's not a perfect situation.
Well, I understand that, but, you know, some of the stuff that has went on in the last six or eight months is, is a little bit weird no matter where you go, but we, so we have to take it out of the box.
Yeah, I, I hear you, man, I, I'm right there.
Why don't we check with, uh, the other arenas in the area to see how they are handling.
See if anybody else is doing any, any scanning or something, I mean, it could be something the MAC does, but their pockets are a lot larger than ours.
And then we can put something in place and report back with that.
Yeah. Um, anything else on the pre- preparedness plan? I, I've gotta get something together for open public, uh, because that's a big part of, not only our revenue, but our services to the community, so.
Would you, would, Kevin, would you do the outside rink then too then, or would you?
The only thing differently with the outside rink is no warming house. No warming house, we wouldn't do the warming house, that would just, that would be a bad situation.
Right, exactly.
You know, but putting the ice in and letting people skate outside, I mean, that's, you know, that's, those are the types of activities we want to encourage people to do, and especially in the wintertime, get out of the house, get out of those areas, and, you know, go have some activity, some exercise.
So they would use the inside rink for changing?
No, they would, well, we would, we would put benches out there and be just like old school. Put your skates on in the cold, maybe mom and dad got the car out, sitting there heating up so that they can get some warmth, but.
That's, they're on their own there.
Pretty much, you're on your own, that's, that's the way that was when I was a kid.
You and me both, Kevin.
Absolutely, throws toes off, let me tell you. Um, so obviously, a lot of our time here lately has been working on, uh, project, uh, uh, COVID-type projects, especially for this time of the year. We're kinda trying to ramp down on the cutting schedule, but we're not doing that, we're actually, we're, we're cutting weekly. Um, it, basically, you know, a weekly cutting means two and a half days is spent just cutting the trim and working on, on the city properties. So that's eating up time right now, and, and it's okay, but it's just, it makes it. Um, we are still sanitizing the, the, the public shelters, uh, seven days a week, so. Um, we do have somebody, uh, myself or Jason, who's coming in on Saturdays and Sundays, and sanitizing, spraying everything down like you did at home, so, uh, we're trying to maintain with that. And then the other thing too is that we've been doing some machinery, uh, maintenance, some of the stuff that's gonna be brought out for use in, uh, in the, in this next season, and some of the things that are gonna be put away. We've been doing a lot of maintenance on that. We're gonna be changing out the, uh, bearings in both augers of the Zamboni here next week. We just got those bearings in, so do some, do some maintenance work for that, and then start getting ready for the cooldown.
Council.
Council, any questions, guys?
Um, River Lake City City Arena mandatory COVID-nineteen protection, fine, we need a motion to approve it. To put it in place.
Zoom move. Bell second.
Any questions? All in favor?
I.
Okay, um, one thing that Kevin and I had discussed is, um, depending on how things keep moving, with ice going in, commotion going on there, as far as council continuing to do meetings here.
Yes.
And how we wanna do that, because obviously, it's gonna get loud.
There's gonna be distractions.
There, yep, the distractions, everything of that sort, how would we like to proceed? We talked in November, probably, it's gonna be the start though.
Because we're gonna go to closed lobby for the month of October, I think we can continue with this process through the month of October, but really, once we hit November and, you know, and, you know, again, we don't know where this virus is going and, and what's happening. Uh, you know, if we do really start to progress forward, you know, this, this room will need to be used at some point.
Can we go back to the Zoom meeting then?
We could do that, the other thing I thought of is maybe taking, you know, a table of this sort, adding it on to our, um, table at council.
Oh, sure.
And just spreading our U out a little bit more.
Sure.
And trying that out.
Yeah, that's fine, that could work.
That's the only other option I've thought of at that point, but we have some time to come up with ideas.
And then I think you can use the lobby area and the, for a staging area for just like, you know, department heads. I mean, you know, I can sit out in the lobby and tell them, you know, we need to come in and speak if I'm presenting.
If we can't do, yeah, audience volume, six feet, yep. So something to just ponder, keep in mind, um, if you think of something in the meantime, obviously, let us know, because we may have to cross that bridge here.
So as of right now, October will be still here, and we'll plan from there. We're giving out to the public from there.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions for Kevin?
Nope. You guys have a great Labor Day weekend, okay?
Yeah, thanks, Loma.
Ian, Bart, Mike, Kim?
Well, we did have our, uh, meeting here, um, last Tuesday, wasn't it? If I remember right, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm going up, I, I have no notes in front of me currently right now. Uh, one of our biggest discussions, uh, at, at the top, one of the biggest topics that we had, uh, was the, uh, talking about, uh, the, uh, the Pearl property, uh, which, which seemed to now, um, draw a flag up a little bit too with the agreement that we had proposed with them. Um, we, we, we talked exclusively about that on where we were going to be at and what we need to do, uh, moving forward with that. And I think our consensus with the E D A was pretty much just let things rest for a little while here. Uh, could be thirty days or more, um, just to kinda see where, where, where things are at. Um, we did discuss a little bit about, um, about the, uh, the proposed bike lanes, um, that we had. Uh, talked about here a few months ago, um, the designated bike lanes that would be coming off of, of the, uh, the main streets here, uh, for, um, off of the trail. But one of the concerns that we did have, I think, as a council, was it was supposed to loop, uh, down Main Street. And so we're reevaluating that, looking at, at a possibility and how that can be done. Um, so we're looking into that too, so. Um, and then, um, huh, I'm trying to think what else. Um, Kevin Moody, do you have anything else maybe you can post on there too that you have a notes on?
Well, we talked about the Tifft District thing.
Okay.
Um, you covered it, the Ryan Development Consulting Pearl's, the.
Enhancement program?
Yep, the enhancement, yes.
Yep.
We talked about that, you nailed it.
Okay, anybody have any questions for the E D A?
The enhancement program, what is the maximum on that?
Five thousand.
Five thousand.
Five thou- that's a magic.
Well, so, yes, you can receive five thousand.
Yes.
It's a ten-thousand-dollar, fifty-fifty, so, yes, the max you can receive is five thousand.
All right, and our next meeting looks like it is on, uh, nine fifteen.
Yep.
Six thirty here at the ice arena, always open to the public. Thank you very much, that's all I have.
Move on, I M D, planning commission. Uh, Tim, you want to take?
Well, how do you wanna do that, you weren't there and Tim is.
I can explain what they talked about. Do you wanna explain what we talked about?
Well, we talked, well, first of all, we did talk about, uh, the, uh, Centennial medals. Um, we had some folks that come in and had some questions, we answered all their questions for them. They, they were very open to it, and they were thankful that, you know, they, we were able to answer all their questions that they, they brought forward to us. Um, and we did talk a little bit about Pearl, I guess we all kinda did that a little bit, so we'll touch on it, but I think that's pretty much about it, and then, I can take the other.
Yeah, that was the, the, um, development, we just wanna keep going with and, um, looking at some of the, um, areas that Cynthia had brought up in her finding some facts to just make sure that we have in place when it comes down to the developers agreement. So, um, we're just trying to keep things fresh and in our minds and make some of those decisions right now. So once they start moving forward with an actual written developers agreement, we can start working out those terms more.
A citizen grabbed some paperwork off last night, we're gonna stay up and then sometime about that. Two questions about some lot size and the pipeline, so I will be transferring that to you.
That'd be great.
All right, the other item that the planning commission talked about was Resolution one fifty dash twenty, a resolution approving variance requests for accessory building variance. It's on their second last page here. Where you found it, I mean, I think.
This would be for property four, six, five minutes straight.
That would be neat.
There we go.
We're asking for variance, uh, to build a garage on the, on the backside of our house. Um, it's no infringement of any properties around us, um, it's not encroaching on anyone's properties. We've talked with our neighbors, everyone is, you know, quite happy about it, and whatever we wanna do. Also, this, this garage would also lend some additional privacy against the apartment building that's directly behind our home. Um, the variance being is, as the ordinance states, nothing, we want the extra two feet, so it would be thirty-two by thirty-two feet. This isn't going, like I said, it's not going on to any east. This isn't going, like I said, it's not going on to any easement or, you know, imposing on anybody else's property surrounding it. It would be right on earth, but in keeping in touch with what the ordinance right now reads, we will still be up and beyond the 40% landscape even with that property, with that extra two feet. On the other hand though, for us, it will be an easier build, lesser expensive because of that, that two feet. So, I'm just asking for approval for the variance for second garage.
Question about the access to this building would be through where?
Through, through the backside from our house.
So, when you say backside, it's gonna be alleyway access?
Well, okay.
Or side of your house driveway to the back?
This is our house. This would be the garage. There's a door here, but the garage door opens up to the side. This is the alley.
So, you'll be using the alley as a.
No.
A secondary means of access to that building.
You can go there.
Yeah.
The access will be from the, from the alleyway. The, the garage door will face the east and will be coming from that and that's where the garage door will be.
So, there won't, won't be a driveway a side of your house to the back?
No, no.
It'll be.
Just in the back, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, you'd be coming through the back alley.
Coming through that alley, yeah.
The petitioners are understanding that we do not service alleys?
Yes.
And that definitely, any damage to the alley would be the petitioner's cost if this would go through.
We, we.
So, basically during the spring and the fall when it's wet and you use that and you get ruts and everything else, very possibly would have to go back to the taxpayers or the landlord or us to repair anything there.
Things wouldn't be put into there very often.
We set it up, we're setting up like, like all the neighbors behind us that all have the garage, they're all facing the same way. They're all facing the east, they're all facing the east side.
Is it, is it gonna be, is it gonna be separate or is it gonna be attached to your existing portion of where your garage is?
Which, which I wanted to be, I wanted to be that. I just, you know, for the safety factor of, you know, cans and everything else that, you know, we, today we all have vehicles and stuff like that. I'd like to get all that out of my garage.
Okay, alright, and then it will also be cosmetically, it'll, it'll look.
In tune with our house.
In tune with your home.
It'll be siding and everything else.
Every, just like your home is.
Okay.
Alright, those are the only questions that I have pertaining to it, so.
Any other questions?
The size of it, since it's 24 feet, square feet over the code, what's the purpose of that?
Purpose of that, like I said, first of all, we're gonna square it out. Second of all, we still, in the ordinance where we, where it is right now, we can go up to 40 percent. We, we gotta maintain that 40% in our lot size and keep in that with our lot size.
The, the size of a lot, correct, the usage of the total lot.
Right.
But this, if the ordinance also said 1,000 square feet, so that's what I'm saying. What is really the use of the 24 square feet?
By the 24 feet, like I said, we're just trying to keep it square. We're trying to get every usage that we can out of this thing. We wanna keep it square. And that's our, that's our idea is keeping everything possibly square. And also a big thing is, it's, believe it or not, we are from, our backyard is to apartment building. And this is really gonna help us have some privacy? When it's looking up, we've, we've had this issue before.
So, one of the.
We've had, we've had, we've had to, we've had to contact some people about that.
So, one of the hardships you're claiming is privacy to the R2.
Yep.
No, they stayed underneath, whereas the first usable property.
Well, again, feel like we discussed before with variances, they're all individual. So, the criteria that they're looking at, even though it might be just a little bit over, it's not very much at all. But I see no issues whatsoever with this variance as long as it's been, the neighbors have been okay with it and everything too and you're gonna move forward in the rightful fashion with all the building permits and everything you need to do, so. Does anybody have any other questions? If not, I'll make a motion on the table for Resolution 150-20 for the approval of the variance.
I will make a motion, the second is.
I have a motion, second. Any discussion, Pat?
Just a clarification. I would like it in the, in the minutes stating that the hardship is to the privacy to, to the R2 structure.
And that's what I'm taking as you, you speak, so I was already working on that sentence.
Pardon me?
I was already working on that sentence right now.
That is a hardship in my opinion. Otherwise, just because you wanna square it is not really a hardship in mine.
So, Resolution 150-20, we have a motion, a second, and we're gonna do a roll call. All in favor, uh, Pat?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Kim?
Abstained.
Kimberly?
Aye.
Myself is an aye. Four ayes and one abstained. Motion passed.
And thank you very much, y'all, for your consideration. Appreciate it.
Planning Commission, next meeting is.
Um, I just talked to Ken Kirk and the chairman. I'm going to throw out an email to see if we can do it on September 17th since at, I believe was our last meeting with Tracy Ryan. I know she talked about having to do a public hearing for the Tiff District and it had to be after September 22nd and after I sent this out, I remembered that we set it for the 24th at 6:30. So, that's why workshop will be September 24th instead of the 17th and I'll see if planning can't go on the 17th as of the 24th. So, yes.
So, our next meeting is the 25th?
Yes, council's us, yes.
Cory Trails, Kim?
Cory Trails, we have, actually, we have no meeting now. It's about tomorrow.
Yeah, it got canceled and we're still waiting for Monday.
We're still waiting for Monday. We're open. Be nice to us.
Our next meeting is September 24th at 6:30 here at, at the arena. City Hall will be closed Monday, September 7th for Labor Day. I have one other thing just to add before, well, actually two things. I'm gonna do this one first. One is I'd like to give appreciation to Brad for all the years of him televising our meetings. He's regretfully giving us his notice that he'll be no longer doing the meetings as of October 2nd, I believe. So, thanks for all the years of service, Brad.
Thank you, Brad. Yeah, thank you. But that also brings up one question, Mr. Mayor. Will the Tri-City Cable still actually have a council? I mean, weren't we attending some meetings pertaining to that?
Yeah.
Oh, it'll still go on. That'll hire somebody in my place.
Oh, but, but that'll still be going on, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, alright. I just wanted to verify that. I wasn't quite sure if it was, if everything was gonna get disbanded because of this.
We already got somebody in mind, so.
Okay, alright, thanks. No, thanks, Brad. That was my only concern I had.
The other concern I had was, I brought to my attention that one of the council members was, the weekend, the Friday when we had rain, was going running around town trying to get people to do stuff and ultimately that's the job of the administrator and we were all given phone numbers the day when we started the COVID stuff. So, there's no reason for individuals to go above and beyond their own personal job. And I was told to mention this and, you know, you know the code. Everybody talks to Tessa. Tessa can do the job. She has to call the county. We have a project in town that was done by the county, which means we can't touch anything on, on Main Street while they're doing their project. Everything has to go through the project manager and then through whoever's doing the work, so.
Mr. Mayor rebuttal to that a little bit. I was informed by two residents of possible flooding after water that we got on the Furr Avenue area. I will make phone calls when I cannot reach the city administrator when she was not there at the time. She can't be there 24 hours a day. I understand that.
But did you call my cell phone because I didn't have any US calls?
No, I did not, because the, the water was running into their driveways and going up to their house at the time. And as a liaison from the taxpayers to our city staff, I will continue to relay those messages.
Because I did get a call from one of those residents. I was aware of the situation. I was in contact with the staff at that time. My cell phone is on 24 hours a day.
Do you have that, Pat? Do you have her contact phone number?
Yes, I do.
Okay, alright. Then I think what.
The only thing I don't have is some of the other individuals we'll be getting and I have got some who.
Okay, 'cause at the March emergency meeting that we had, a list was given to the council of all the department heads and council members and E D As. So, if there's something outside of that that you need or don't have yet, you need to let me know.
I will. And I will continue to be a liaison. How much, question I have, Mr. Mayor, one last thing is that the city council should be aware of all public hearings, no matter what area, planning and zoning, E D A or whatever, appreciate a email of these public hearings prior or when they are set up, if at all possible.
To get back, Pat, to get back to your question and everything too, is that, is that again too, we as council members, everybody else, has the rules and regulations in front of them. If you would've gotten a question from a concerned resident, okay, the way you should've approached this is very simple. Not take it on your own responsibility to be able to go ahead and do things. You know the rules and regulations of what you're not supposed to do and what you can do. Your response should've been to them was that, wait a minute, let me see if I can look into this. I will talk to somebody at the city and find out what's going on and find out what needs to be done. And then they will distribute the proper people that need to go ahead and take care of the situation, meaning maintenance or whoever that may be. That call would've been so simple on your end, instead of running around trying to chase down our actual maintenance person and wondering why he is, he's not out taking care of a situation which really he had no control over. So, that's your responsibility as a council member.
My responsibility.
None of us ever do that.
I should do it my way, you do it your way.
Nope, absolutely wrong. That's absolutely wrong, Pat, because you know the rules and regulations and the guideline. No, it's not!
It is.
It's not, it's not, it's the rule.
Nope.
You have rules.
I have rules?
Do you have rules at your job?
I have rules just like you have.
Answer my question.
Rules are very simple to be a liaison and I will.
Do you have rules at your job?
Well, certainly.
Okay, if you don't follow those rules, what happens?
I got it.
What happens?
There's consequences.
Absolutely. It's the same thing. It's the same thing here.
Except that here, we are the leadership committee.
I know, you're the leadership committee.
They're the ones that make the rules.
But what, what part of that?
They're the ones that make the rules, Mike.
It doesn't matter. What part of the?
It does matter.
It does! What part, what part of these rules and regulations that you got from our attorney that you cannot follow? It's black and white.
Which ones that you can't understand are supposed to be a liaison in between the taxpayers?
Doesn't matter, man. I don't, you know what, I don't get personal calls on, on situations and problems. If I was, I'd.
I do.
Well, that's your fault, you know, but you're not, you're not.
It's not my fault.
Yes, you're taking, you're not taking the appropriate way to be able to do it. That's the problem.
No, there's not a problem.
Yes, you take it in your own hands.
Finding as a communication avenue.
No, absolutely wrong. You're absolutely 100% wrong on that. Because I'm gonna tell you what, I called the city, I called the city right away after I found out what was going on that morning. I called the city. I got ahold of Joanie right away. Joanie answered the phone. I asked her about what was going on. I, she said, well, let me see if I can find Tessa. Tessa called me within five minutes out of her cell phone and she, she answered what I needed to answer. That's how quick things could've been taken care of.
I went to City Hall and found out.
Nobody was there?
And I made the call.
Nobody was there?
They were there and that's where I got the number to make the call.
To who?
To, to our maintenance staff, our.
No, you didn't. You were running around chasing them and trying to track them down within city limits.
I went and took a look at one problem that they called and the second one on, one on the east and one on the west. Then I went to City Hall. Actually, I went to, because I seen the lights on at the arena at the time. I thought maybe they would be there. And then I went to City Hall.
Why are you running around kinda checking? It's a phone call away. You're able to let them take care of it.
That's up to me, Mike, not you.
No, it's up, you're, you're not following the guidelines and the rules. Read them over again.
Guidelines and taking care.
Read them over again and figure it out. Cause you don't get it.
That's up to you.
Well, you're the only one that gets reprimanded here, Pat. I'll guarantee you, there's nobody else.
You can, you can go after me, Mike, anytime you want. I don't care.
How much time do you have?
As much as you need.
Really?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Okay, well, start following the rules and regulations just like everybody else does around here.
I will, because I am.
Okay, 'cause if another thing crops up like this and everything too, we'll just continually red flag the stuff that you don't cooperate with.
That's fine.
Well, if you think it's fine, by all means.
So.
It's not right. That's the way it is. It's just not right. And you're not trusting the people that are in charge. That's the big, that's the main thing. You're not trusting everybody and that's, that's your fault, not mine.
Anyone else have anything to add this evening?
Nope, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.